Streaming. Board members, we're going to start live streaming.
We'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with a real call.
Mrs. Bowley. Mr. Munoz.
Present.
Dr. Bonebrake. Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Dr. Schumacher. And Dr. Beeson. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move to executive session, so I'm just looking for a motion.
I move the Board of Education of USD 501 recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss confidential personnel matters pursuant to the personal exception of the Kansas Open Meetings Act to protect the privacy of the individuals discussed. The board will return to open session in the boardroom at 6:01 PM. The superintendent and executive staff are invited into executive session.
Do I have a second for that motion? Dr. Beeson. Any discussion? Okay, we'll move to a vote.
Mrs. Bowley, do you need to vote by hand? Oh, there it went. All votes are in and the motion carries unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think it's time, Dr. Anderson, for the Pledge of Allegiance. Now that we're back.
All right, Mr. Phillips, who graduated from Topeka Public Schools, who just returned from the military is going to start us off. But the whole K-State choir will be doing the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Phillips. And that's the kickoff from McClure. We thank those kiddos for getting us started.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, K-State choir. Now, since we have a flag in here, we'll have to be sure to show the picture of who's in this room doing the pledge when we have a pledge moving forward. And thank you for suggesting, Mr. Phillips.
Great, thank you very much. So we will move through the agenda. And our next item is an adoption of the agenda. I'm looking for a motion.
I move the board adopt the agenda as presented.
And a second from Dr. Bonebrink. Enthusiastic second from Dr. Bonebrink. And any discussion? Okay, we'll open for a vote.
Vote by hand, please.
Okay. All in favor?
Everyone, it's unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you. Okay, I'll turn it back to Dr. Anderson.
This is our favorite time of the board meeting, or at least mine for sure, because we spent about 30 minutes or more acknowledging people. And today, we have a special guest with us from the Air and Space Forces Association. Let me see, where are they at in the room? All right, so they called and they said, "You know what? We want to acknowledge staff and we want to acknowledge one of your amazing STEM teachers." So Frye and statewide chapters of the Air and Space Force Association reached out to our board clerk, shared about this distinguished award. And with that queue up, I'm going to turn it over to them as we talk about our teachers of the year. Do you want to use the microphone in the podium?
Absolutely, and thank you for being here.
You're welcome, thank you. My name is Stu Anz. I'm president of the Air and Space Forces Association for the state of Kansas, which is part of the affiliation with the National Space, Air and Space Force Association. Our mission is very simple, to support the Air Force and the Space Force. There are men, there are members, there are families, and that's what we do. And one of the ways we do is to try and help them in recruiting new service members. And today, this day and age, sometimes it's difficult to meet recruiting requirements because of either age, obesity, drug use, or whatever it might be that disqualifies many people. So we try to find students who have been trained in STEM education that can contribute to the Air and Space Force missions. We have a couple of programs in which we have a cyber patriots, which is basically cybersecurity program for high school students. We have a space program for high school students and make them available. A third way we try to help the Air Force and the Space Force is to help them in their recruiting. And part of that is basically in the Teacher of the Year Award. We look for teachers who may have instructional skills that have contributed to those people who are qualified to serve in the Air Force or the Space Force. And so we have selected a Teacher of the Year from 501. We visited his classroom. And as you might guess, his classroom is filled with mechanical arms and laser printers and robots that roam around the room and do strange things, basically created by his students. And so we were impressed by Mr. Coon, Donald Coon's classroom. And so we nominated him first for our local Teacher of the Year, which is the Frye chapter. And our president of Frye will present to him the certificate. Then, once we have a chapter who has nominated a possible candidate for Teacher of the Year, we then can supllish, submit that name to the national association as the state Teacher of the Year. And we did that. And of course, Mr. Coon was again selected as our state Teacher of the Year. And so we'd like to present him. And we have a jacket that I left the tags on because I didn't know what the size. You can always change it. Basically, state Teacher of the Year, Air and Space Forces Association. And so I did present that to him. And one final item. We also have a check for $750.
And I suspect the board may have a question or two and a mention of gratitude. So, Mr. Coons, first of all, I'm sure they're going to have questions for you. So if you all stay up for just a moment. All right, I'll turn it over to the board.
Yes, are there questions from the board? Ms. Bulley.
So, do you go out to many classrooms to check to see what teachers might qualify?
We try the best we can, but we try to focus really on STEM and teachers that have sort of a spatial classroom setting and takes the kids and teaches them STEM education. And in this case, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. It's very difficult to find this kind of program around the country. I think probably at this point, I had toured the facility beforehand, and I just had an idea of the classroom. And so I went back there and sort of poked around, and that's where I found this man.
Oh.
And then I toured his classroom, took pictures and sent it to National, and they were impressed because of the interesting aspects of his teaching.
Well, we're so glad you came back and poked around. That is just wonderful. We just love it when people are able to see the quality of educators we have in Topeka Public Schools. And of course, Mr. Coons is one of them. So we're so glad that you recognized him and gave him this honor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for doing that.
You're welcome. Bye-bye.
Other questions? Yes, Mr. Munoz.
Mr. Coon, tell us about this amazing class that got the attention of these two gentlemen here.
All right, so at TCAL, I teach the... I don't need a microphone. Oh, everybody on TV needs to hear me. Can you hear me now? All right. So at TCAL, I teach the engineering and applied math pathway. Kids get scared of the applied math, so I just call it the engineering and robotics pathway. We build robots for the VEX tournament. It's a nationwide tournament. They just finished their VEX Worlds. And we had three teams building robots for that. We competed at the KU High School Design Challenge. We built an airplane and a tower. We had a couple of teams build some stuff. And then we also had a team that they wanted to compete in the American Rocketry Challenge. Had a little trouble getting the size of motors. They weren't shipping very well. So they built a rocket, and we launched it. We didn't get up to the qualifying heights. So next year, I've got those motors. They came in last week. So next year, we got the size of motors we need to get up to 900 feet in the air. So hopefully, they stay in that range.
Well, it sounds like you're doing exactly what our mission is, which is engaging and inspiring students. So keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Any other... Is there questions? Thank you, Mr. Coon.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you very much.
And if you all stay around for about five minutes, we'll take a picture with the board as soon as we take a break in about five minutes, okay? We're going to share our Sharefest video. We should have Pastor... Let's see, is it Pastor Brody or Jeremy? All right, Pastor Brody, come on up. And the video is being queued up. All right, how are you, sir? Good to see you.
Sharefest is when all of the community churches come together to help beautify Topeka. Topeka Public Schools has eight schools this year that they are supporting. So it is a wonderful opportunity for the community to come out and beautify Topeka.
Sharefest is meant to be a uniting of churches and other groups to be a blessing to our community with no strings attached.
I think most of the people that you see here, we're volunteers and we like our city so much, and we support all our schools. And we just have an opportunity to share part of our life with the life of these schools and the students and the people in this neighborhood. And when they come to school, it'll look all brand-new out here, and they'll just be happy children.
On behalf of the entire French middle school community, we could not have done any of this without the help of Sharefest. Painted railings, helped mulch, helped build, they're building a shed. They put in a little mobile library. It's wonderful, and we appreciate all of their help and support of not only French middle school, but public education.
Oh, we'll be sparkling. We're super excited because this is so timely. It's right before graduation. And you know, during graduation, Hope Street brings in a lot of families to celebrate our seniors. And so having the school spruced up right before that, it's just the perfect timing.
We're just cleaning up the school, beautifying the school, basically. We have benches here. This is going to be like the garden area and like a lunch area and outside classrooms. I think other people are going to like it. You get more lunchroom. You get more like class options. You just get like a lot more scenery.
Amazing, thank you. This is at least the 11th year that I've been involved in Sharefest. And every year, it just gets bigger and better, and we are so appreciative of their support.
We can't thank them enough. It's the many hands that make the work light. So we are so grateful to have all these volunteers who are willing to support us and our mission, which is to take care of our students and our community.
Yes, are there questions from the board? Ms. Bulley?
I was wondering if you could put that last screen up with all the churches involved? I know, I am so sorry to ask that. But this is how you learn. This is what teachers do to you. They give you a problem, you have to solve it. Right there, yeah. Right there, yeah. Perfect, thank you. I wanted to make sure I saw every single church that gave into Topeka Public Schools. So thank you for doing that.
And Pastor Brody, you have some comments you'd like to make about Share Fest's time, what all was accomplished, and any items that you'd like to share, sir?
Yes, I honestly, that video did a really good job of explaining. So whoever made that, that was amazing. Kudos to you. That was an excellent image of what happens on that day and just the amazing feat of pulling together hundreds of people from, as you see, dozens of organizations. There's actually, believe it or not, even more than what's listed on there that participate in it, especially there's a lot of vendors that donate their own staff that come out and do tree service, landscaping. And I think often that is something I forget to mention, that on top of the hundreds of volunteers, we have dedicated professionals coming out, doing work that they are doing and using their gifts and skills for. And so always an amazing thing. It's the 19th year that we've done Share Fest. So next year's the 20th year, and we're hoping to do something really big for that.
I was wondering, how do you top each year? How do you make it bigger? And it sounds like next year has to go even there. But I know in the past, you've talked about your planning for next year really starts right now, I think.
It starts right now, yeah. To be honest, we haven't topped every year. The reality is that Share Fest has gone through seasons of ups and downs like any organization or initiative does. In 2018, we had over 1,800 people. And so this year, having around 750 people, we still do a lot of work. We're doing more with less, having more professional people step in on the planning side to make our work as efficient as possible. But yes, usually, we do a nine-month planning, but for the 20th year, I did not stop spinning my wheels. Once Share Fest stopped, I immediately sat down with the team and built out a plan for what we are going to talk through this summer and hopefully connect again with Billy Wallace, who I want to mention as a huge help from the Topeka Public School side. We couldn't do it without her help and representation from your guys' side. So thank you.
Are there questions? Other questions?
Pastor Brody, how do we give you this every year?
Nineteen of them.
We're going to say something different for next year then. But thank you for investing in Topeka Public Schools and working to beautify the community. You are inspiring people to use their time, talent, and resources to be a blessing. So appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, I know you're wondering why all this purple is in the room. Well, some folks work at Eisenhower, and they're representing West. But most importantly, and I know Mrs. Sharp loves this because she drives to all the K-State games, she has never missed one, I don't think, of one of the seasons, K-Staters are in the house. And these K-State young people are young adults. These K-State adults have gone through the Program for Topeka Public Schools. It's part of our pipelines. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Wallace, because this is really something that she does. She's the person that I've appointed along with Dr. Mack to teach the class. They shepherd these young people through. But here's the other thing, almost every principal that we select that has come through our pipeline through our K-State program. And in fact, when she's done sharing a little bit about the program, calling up leadership that also is a professor in the program, will mention who might be in this space that just accepted opportunities, that will be new administrators. We are churning out administrators every year for Topeka Public Schools and for Kansas, and we couldn't be more proud of their graduation. I'll turn it over to Ms. Wallace, and she may want to call another teammate or two up.
Absolutely. So this started, and we're actually currently teaching our seventh cohort. This is our sixth cohort that graduated last May. It is a partnership with Kansas State University. We provide a professor, and then our K-State provides a professor. We provide a couple of people to teach alongside her. And over the course of the two years, they will leave with their master's degree in educational leadership, and they can choose to take their praxis and become a licensed building leader. And it's been a wonderful way for us to grow our program. Currently, 18 of our building leaders have come through the K-State Leadership Academy, and that does not count many other people in leadership positions that are not, they've also grown and accelerated in their career, but not necessarily as a building principal.
Interestingly, some don't want to be a building principal. They just want the leadership development and growth. So we're going to ask our K-State professor to also come up. And I know you're wondering who these young people are, or new graduates are. So, Mrs. Wallace, any other comments you want to make before I turn it over to our other K-State professor, who might want to say a comment or two? And then we'll just give the microphone to this group to share where they're located at. If you have recently been appointed as an administrator in some capacity, be sure to let the board members know who you are, so they put a face with the name, and they are reminded of how we're growing our own talent.
And then I'd like to also recognize Dr. McDonald. He teaches with us too.
Dr. Mack, you're here, back here? Did you want to come on up, sir? Come on up, sir. And we, all three professors, so it's Dr. Mack, Mrs. Wallace, Dr. McDonald, Ms. Wallace, and then K-State provides a professor as well.
So, good evening, members of the board. Dr. Anderson, thank you for having me. This is such a wonderful opportunity for your school district. K-State appreciates the partnership. I've learned so much about Topeka Public Schools through your candidates, and I'm very excited to be here tonight to honor these folks and happy to send these out, them one by one.
And want to share your names?
Sure, did I not say? I'm sorry, I'm Michelle Miller. I apologize for that.
Good evening. Thank you, Board of Education, for supporting this wonderful program. It's great to see the number of Topeka Public School employees that want to go through the program, complete the program, and see that they want to go through and support our students at a new level where they're able to touch the lives at a higher level, more lives. And it's great to see how we're able to build that pipeline where we can build our own and train our own and see the success grow across our whole district. So thank you very much.
Ms. Wallace, did you want to join your other professor colleagues to pass out? Well, I want to be on this side, so that way, and as our young people come up, they will share where they're located at. And if they've recently been hired as an administrator, they'll share that as well. Would you two want to join as well?
Sure.
Megan Edmonds? Megan, oh, I'm sorry, Nicole Frazee? Tatyana Geiten? Alan Lake? And he's not here tonight. Lori Lane? Who's also not here tonight? Jennifer Murphy-McDaniel? Deandre Phillips? Bree Sutton? Who I don't believe is here tonight? Miley Templeton? Dawn Wendt? Erica Whitaker? Kenton Noonan?
All right, I didn't realize we're standing in front, so everyone's standing your back. So you guys come all the way back over here, and then we'll go ahead and give you the microphone to share where you're at. All right, now everyone in the audience can see who you are.
So if you'd like, they can share where they're at currently and then what their position is?
Yes, and if they plan to go into administration, I'm sure the board will have some questions. Mr. Phillips was in Kuwait and continued the program while in Kuwait, having things emailed to him, emailing us at odd weird hours, like at 2:00 in the morning, saying, "Dr. Anderson, can I do an interview?" I'm like, "What? What? What?" So it's, this group is impressive. Mr. Phillips, we'll start with you.
Sure. Nice to meet you, board. I'm Deandre Phillips. I currently work at Eisenhower Middle School as the Behavioral and Math Interventionist. I'm excited to say I just accepted a position at Topeka West to be the administrative intern for the next school year. So I'm excited to be a charger now, and I'm glad that I get to continue wearing purple, going from Eisenhower to Topeka West. So thank you.
Hello, my name is Latasha Gates. I am currently, well, I started the program as a fourth-grade teacher at Jardine Elementary. During the program, I moved into the Dean of Students position, and I have been hired as the admin intern for the next school year, so.
I am Kylie Dustjardens. When I first started the program, I was a fourth-grade teacher, moved to an instructional coach, and this past year, I was the admin intern at McClure Elementary.
My name is Erica Whitaker. I have been continued as a seventh-grade math teacher at Landon Middle School, and I am very proud and happy of where I work and who I work with.
I'm Megan Edmonds, and I'm a counselor at Scott Dual Language Magnet.
Hi, I'm Jen McDaniel. I am at Williams. I started out in the program as a fifth-grade teacher, moved down to second grade, and am happily back in my fifth-grade role with my glorious team, and that is where I plan to stay for a while.
Tatyana Geiten, I am currently at McClure Elementary. I do behavior special education. And yeah, I, yeah, next year, I will be at Meadows Elementary doing behavior sped. So, yeah.
My name's Nicole Frazee. When I started the program, I transitioned into Dean of Students at Highland Park High School, and then this year, I have been Building Leader Intern at Capital City School, and next year, I will be Building Leader Intern at Loman Elementary.
My name is Dawn Wendt. I'm at Landon Middle School as our gifted facilitator, and happy to be with my team, Ms. Erica.
My name is Kenton Noonan. I am the sped consultant teacher and the department head for Topeka West.
My name's Miley Templeton. When I started, I was a first-year teacher, so I am finishing up my fifth year, and I finished my praxis. So next year, I'll be ready to start applying for those admin jobs.
We'll turn it over to the board if you have any questions.
Yeah, are there questions from the board? Yes, Mr. Munoz? Yeah, keep moving around the space. So that's the board meetings.
So I'm very curious, what sort of things did you all study that would help you to prepare for a potential admin role in the future?
And anyone can jump in, and I'll take a second microphone on this side. No, you go ahead and start since you have a microphone.
Okay, so we were able to take a lot of classes. It was a super cool program because it wasn't just like one class after another. They were able to merge all of the classes, and they kind of knew where we kind of were in our classrooms and in our seasons. So like towards the end of the year, we would go specifically talking about behavior management. And then, you know, towards the state testing side, we would learn how to successfully be able to administer tests and be able to properly prepare for our students. So I don't think it was a matter of what courses made us the most successful. It was our leaders that gave us the materials that made us the most successful.
Yes, and another key component was, we really focused on some of those district initiatives as well with the teacher clarity and building teacher capacity and looking kind of at that leadership lens and learning of different leadership styles and how to build our teachers and kind of build those efficacious teams.
Yeah, Ms. Bulley?
So I was wondering, in this program, did you have to apply for it and be selected? So right away, you're the cream of the crop, right? So congratulations on that. I didn't know if you just, we took everybody, or if you had to apply. So congratulations for not only qualifying for the program but completing it. So good luck with all of your future endeavors and whatever your dreams are. I hope they all come true for you in 501. All right? All right, thank you.
Put it in writing now. Other questions from the board? Okay, thank you guys very much.
Very final item, our speech language pathologists. I know they're in the room. Come on up, Ms. McKissick.
Good evening. I just feel like I was here yesterday. I can't believe how fast the year has gone. I would like to introduce two speech pathologists that I brought tonight to introduce to you. This is Emma Bolander, and this is Madison Dressler, and they are kind of the speech department's version of the district's Grow Your Own. They started in the district as paraprofessionals, and through the support of Administration, Board, Dr. Anderson, Dr. Harrington, we were able to support them in their journey to becoming speech pathologists. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, Madison Dressler. I started, I'll kind of just describe how I went through, not a program, but kind of a program of our own. I started as a para in the speech language department, and I did that for one year. During that year, I was doing online graduate school for speech language pathology, so with the intention of becoming a speech therapist. I did that for a year. I did work during the day, did my school in the evenings. The second year of my graduate program, I resigned from my position as a para because it was just a little bit too much. I was more hands-on my second year of online program. So during that year, I was a student. So I was an intern, kind of an internship, still in the department with another speech therapist. And then this is my third year, and I'm a speech therapist now, so. I am at Meadows Elementary and Randolph Elementary this year, and I love the teams. And yep, one of the reasons I chose to stay with the district is just the support that we have. It's really unmatched with the districts around, having a speech language department, but also the support of building staff is amazing.
My name's Emma Bolander. I started in, or January of 19, as a speech para. When COVID came, I unfortunately got into grad school and had to leave for a little bit, but I came back as a student for two different rotations. I was at Jardine Elementary and then Ross. Now, I'm in my third year as a speech pathologist at Highland Park Central, which has been really fun because I was a para there before. So it's been really cool to see some of those kids I knew as kindergartners getting ready to graduate fifth grade and finding their voices.
Yeah.
Are there questions from the board? The speech, oh, it's the...
I didn't realize that we had this Build Your Own in the speech pathology, so I'm really excited to hear this, and it sounds like you guys really appreciated the program. So thanks for staying with 501. We love it.
We've kind of gotten creative in terms of how we recruit. We do have shortages across the nation in related service providers, so speech, pathologists, OTs, PTs, school psychs. So this was kind of a unique opportunity for us to do some trials and see how it works. And we And we have one, another one that is on maternity leave, and she did a sped teacher to paraprofessional to, in the speech department, to SLP. So just getting creative and trying to maintain our department, yeah.
So do we have this type of grow your own and all the other ones that you listed as well?
Occupation, OTPT, that, I know they have para, they have some paraprofessional support, so I'm, I don't think I could speak-
Right, and we have parent-to-teacher programs, but what Ms. McKissick is saying is that she was creative in saying, "How can we support people?" and having them have internships with her. So it's something that she really helped design and create to allow young people to move directly into their chosen profession. So as we celebrate Speech Language Hearing Month, rather than reading a proclamation, being able to see one of the newest things that she's helped bring to light and fruition. I'm going to turn it back over to the board.
Yeah, Mr. Munoz. You know, I'm really curious. Your journey is pretty inspiring. What are some of the things that this district did sort of help you along this way to get to where you're at now?
When I was a para, I was really upfront with Ms. McKissick just about my, my plans to hopefully become a speech therapist. I actually did some shadowing really early on before I came on the district as a para with a speech therapist that was a family friend. And so she kind of showed me, I got to shadow her for a couple days, so that was a good support, just an opportunity to see what it's like in the real world because it's something you can't see in undergrad. As a para, I was able to learn just so much from the speech therapist that I was with. I was at a few different schools, so I had the opportunity to see therapy in action for, every therapist kind of does it a little bit differently, and just seeing expectations, how the department runs, and then as a student, just lots of flexibility, willingness to support me even as a student and not as a staff member was really beneficial.
And then we are able to bring them back for their externship, so that is another good support their second year of graduate school.
Very good. Other questions? Dr. Baumbrake.
Speech therapy really wasn't a concern 30 years ago. What do you suppose has happened?
Ms. McKissick, is it something that contributed to speech, greater numbers of speech therapy students?
I think that we did have SLPs in schools 30 years ago, not as many. I just think that the, our profession has grown with the schools in terms of seeing the impact of language, speech and language development, and the impact it has early on with delays in creating issues in other areas like cognition, reading, written language. So I think that we've been able to become integral parts of the district, working with special education teachers, general education teachers.
Parents, teachers, and early identification.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. McKissick, for your leadership. And we'd like to take a break for photos.
Yep, we'll pause for photos.
All right, so our air and space team. Did you have the, I guess not, the aid to walk to-
No, I can, I can walk. I just hop around my room.
All right, so please look this way, come in the middle, then everyone will come around back, stand where everyone's supposed to. Gentlemen, go both sides of the bench. All right, next to it, bring on down, share, pass, pass, fro, come one down. Oh, you're 20, you know what these new case they track with you as a group of your 20s to volunteer at one place. Project, I'm just calling it out there.
We did, all of them.
And our case makers, one up, and our professors from case state. So case state, you all line up, they'll come along with you. All right, Ms. Wagers, panel. Thanks, Mrs. Wallace. Thank you. And our speech language folks, come one up. There was a pre-last group.
Okay, and so it's time for public communications, and I believe we do have somebody to speak tonight. Dr. Gray is bugging right now. Mr. Fulbright, it is your turn. It's your turn. I'm going to read to you just a little blurb. The rules, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the board. We ask that your remarks to the board be respectful. If you should have a complaint against a specific employee, we ask that you submit your written complaint to the superintendent. If the complaint is against the superintendent, please address your written complaint to either me as board president or to the clerk of the board. Thank you.
My name's Thomas Fulbright. I guess I like to complain about that Thomas Fulbright guy. He keeps complaining to the board about cell phones, but this time I'm going to do it in person. I've been teaching at Hope Street.
Mr. Fulbright, your address, please, too.
Oh, sorry, 1400 Southwest Pembroke Lane, but it feels like I live at 1900 Southwest Hope Street.
Thank you.
So I've been teaching at Hope Street since 2008, and I've noticed a lot of changes there, and some of them have been positive, but cell phones really have had a detrimental effect on just generally how class goes at Hope Street. I'm really hoping as a district we can do something to change that. Some of you who've been here for a while know that the wind turbine project at Hope Street was kind of a big deal. Like, we had students win state and qualify for nationals, and we have a wind turbine erected because of those kids. Like, this project used to be something that kids got really invested in, really, really, really into. And then this other thing came into the classroom, which was way more exciting apparently than building a wind turbine. And social media is just, I mean, you've all seen the internal documents from TikTok, right? Like, their research says that smartphones are addictive. So having to deal with 30 of those addicts in the classroom is, is kind of a difficult task. I think teachers really, really need your help on this because teachers have a lot of decisions to deal with every minute, managing all of those young people who are trying to give an education. And to be managing their behaviors on cell phones, which are way more interesting than we are, is, is very difficult. The degree of micromanaging is so stressful. I know that there's teachers who have left the profession because of that. It's been one of my biggest frustrations, to be honest. Don't follow that. So this, this past summer, I was able to spend a month in DC as part of the James Madison Fellowship, and got to sit around with 49 of the best teachers in the country, one from each state, plus me. And we could agree that there's a lot of issues that social studies teachers face, like civic dialogue, constitutional understanding, civic engagement. Like, those are things that we feel we can address through good pedagogy. We can, we can help kids better deal with those things. But one thing that we cannot compete with, that we cannot handle on our own through teaching, is cell phones. If I'm making the decision between helping this kid who I know is struggling, who's actually trying to work, versus managing that kid who's doing fine but is constantly on their phone, I know what battle I'm going to pick. But because I'm picking this battle, what's the cost on that kid? And that, that's hard. Am I doing on time? Oh, okay. Yeah, I just know that from stories that I've heard from other teachers, every single time that any of the enforcement is really on the shoulders of the teacher, it's going to lead to decisions that lead to, I don't want to say unfair, but inconsistent enforcement from room to room. And that means if you're going to be the one that's going to fight it, then you're going to become the bad guy. And that could harm your relationship to be able to help. Okay, I'll stop.
You can finish your thought if you'd like, Mr. Fulbright.
What was I saying? Just the idea that if, if I'm going to fight with a student over their phone, they're probably not going to want to work with me on their classwork. And that's a very difficult decision to make. And even those kids who are successful, I'll put parentheses around it, and get their work done, and that's why they get their phone out. Why am I going to struggle with that? But what's the cost for them? If they think that finishing their work is their ticket to their phone, are they going to get their work done to get it done? Are they going to really thrive on their work? Are they going to want to do as best as they can? See students who are capable of much more doing much less.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for coming, thanks for coming to graduation.
Okay, so we will move on to business by consent. I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the items of business by consent as presented, and authorize the board president or superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
Do I have a second, Ms. Bulley? Is there any questions or comments? I'll go to Ms. Bulley first and then Dr. Beeson. Go ahead.
So I see we have an esports software in place, and I know that when we purchase curriculum for the district, we have some type of review. I'm wondering if we have had any review on this particular esports software that, or if we should. Maybe I'm putting it out there like that.
So Ms. Wallace or Mr. Reiner, do you want to speak to the esports software, or Mr. Dick happens to be here from T-Cout, so I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Dick, and-
The esports software that we chose is what is the CAESH approved for competition. And so that, when we picked that vendor, there was a high likelihood that that was the vendor that Activities Association would choose, should they approve esports. And that is the vendor that they went with ultimately. And so in order to be in line with competitions, if we're going to do that through the Activities Association, that is the software that we would need to use.
There was only one choice of software by the state?
They, the Activities Association, from my understanding, reviewed different vendors and made the decision to go with this one.
Just the one? Okay, because I know at one time there were two.
I think they chose just the one.
Just the one. Thank you.
Dr. Beeson.
This question, I think, is for Mrs. Wallace. There was notice that we have lost the reform grant decision by the federal government, or a grant granted by the federal government. This is our second time losing the same grant because it was given back, correct, and then pulled again?
Correct. We lost the grant due to federal cuts. There was a stay of many of the grants. It was reinstated, I believe, two board meetings ago, and it is being terminated again.
And would you remind us what that grant money is used for and what we will lose?
So yes, it's a partnership with Kansas State University that is used to help recruit and retain both high school students and paraprofessionals to become teachers. Okay, thank you.
Other discussion on the motion? Dr. Baumbrake asked, how much is it?
$27,000 over the next three years.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Okay, the motion is still open.
And the vote is open. All votes are in, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Anderson, I will send it back over to you for the superintendent's report.
Well, in that consent agenda you just approved, Mrs. Pino, I'm going to ask her to stand for just a moment. She is a, did you go to Meadows initially?
I did. Meadows, French, and Topeka West.
All right, so Meadows Monarch, who is now the new assistant principal at Williams Elementary. We're so excited for her. She's also the child of Yvonne Spaulding. So all kinds of connections there. We are so proud of her. She's been at Jardine as a teacher, as a dean, and as an intern, I believe, as well. And so as she has traveled through that succession plan we were just talking about, Ms. Schmidt, her next step now is assistant principal, so we're excited for her. So congratulations. And Ms. Palmero, were you all her amen proud? That's why you're in the audience?
Yes, I got both my girls here.
Okay.
Dr. Anderson, we also had Ms. Yates on tonight.
And Ms. Yates, who just announced who she was, she was now the person taking on the role, moving into the Jardine role. So we're excited, again, as she's left from teacher to dean to admin intern to assistant principal. So we are excited for Mrs. Yates as well, and we want to congratulate her. And I'll turn it back over to-
This is you.
Me. I'm going to turn it back over to me.
It's the health incentive recommendation.
Yep, I see it right down here with Mrs. Sharp, who will be sharing a little bit about what the Health Committee has talked about. And as Ms. Sharp was talking to me about the health incentive recommendation, I shared, since you all are on the committee, for the members of the board are on that committee, that Ms. Sharp and members of the board who are on that committee should be the ones to share that recommendation before anything else is shared with staff. So the original discussion was, let's share with staff this new thing that we may be doing. Ideally, you'll have conversation and give your thoughts regarding their recommendation, and then we'll proceed from there. So we're going to turn it over to the finance team and Ms. Sharp, and invite comments from board members who are on the committee.
Yes, we have a team effort tonight. Mr. Bucy, Mr. Minkie, I think, is losing his voice. But yes, we would like to share the recommendation to incentivize staff to get their yearly physicals. But yes, we would like to share the recommendation to incentivize staff to get their yearly physicals.
All right, thank you. Yes, Mr. Minkie has lost his voice. But I do sit on the district's health insurance committee along with Doctors Beeson, Bonebrake, and Ms. Schmidt. The Health Insurance Committee has recommended a program to incentivize our employees to get an annual preventative screening in an effort to combat the rising cost of health insurance premiums. So on this, in this packet here, this, if you go back to that first page really quick, this was something that our insurance broker had put together. They've, they've worked with several entities and employers on developing a program like this. So in a nutshell, what this is, is over the last, over the last six years, for sure, we've been upside down with our claims experience. So as you know, we go through Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas for our health insurance. A, a loss ratio is calculated based on the premiums that they collect versus what they pay out in claims. Obviously, they want to collect more in premium than what they pay out. The last six years, that's been upside down. Last year, we were at almost one hundred and forty percent on our loss ratio, and we are at one hundred and twenty-four percent through the end of March. Now, we do have a new three-year rate cap, which is capped at eight and a half percent. But if, if we, if, yeah, the first year, I'm sorry. So this, this first year, we're capped at eight and a half percent. But, but if our trend keeps going the way that it is, we're going to hit those caps each and every year. And it, it will leave some, some uncertainty at the end of that rate cap agreement. So to think outside the box, things that we could do to lower health insurance premiums, we know that we need to lower our claims experience, right? So what this is, and this is, this is part of this packet, the, it's called a physician engagement incentive. So employees will have one year, so starting July first of this, this current year through June thirtieth of next year, to get a physical. And if they get a physical during that time, they will pay the normal health insurance premium. If they do not get a physical, every covered adult, so, so either the employee or if they have employee spouse or a family plan, both adults would each incur a fifty-dollar per month premium addition. So that's, that's a hundred dollars a month if there's two adults and twelve hundred dollars a year. That, that number was tossed around by the committee. USI recommended that as a good starting point. You know, you have to have a number that's high enough to really move the needle. But, but you also have to be careful as well. We don't wanna lose employees over this. Did you guys hear what he said? I didn't either. No, I was kidding. So twenty, twenty, twenty percent of adults get physicals annually. And I was telling Mr. Minkie that I'm guilty of this, you know, I'm always working. But, but this fifty dollars a month, I mean, that's a needle mover for me. So I can personally attest that this is, this is going to have me going, going to see my physician annually. So yes, we're upside down in our, our claims experience. We also need to make sure they've got the frequently asked questions up here in front of you. We really need to make sure that we move on this quickly in order to get the word out before our employees leave for the summer.
Mr. Bucy, Ms. Schmidt has a question, I believe, so we're gonna let her ask.
No, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna add a little bit cuz I sit on the committee.
Yep.
And the idea behind this is that we know that if we can get people to see their primary care provider and get in for routine exams, that if anything is amiss, we catch it sooner. And if we catch it sooner, then we pay less. And so we're trying to incentivize them getting into their primary care provider. And this is a very common program. As a former Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas employee, I can say they did something very similar. And so it's, it's not meant to be punitive. It is really meant to show that we care about our employees. We care about the bottom line as well, but we want people to take the time to make sure and see their primary care and stay healthy. And that is most important, you know, more than anything. And if something is there, you know, that we can catch those things early and hopefully not down the road.
So that's exactly, if, if I could have written a narrative for this slide right here, it would have been that, what you just said. So this, this just shows you stage one versus stage four cancer. When it's caught, the, the cost of, of catching it later versus catching it early. But as Ms. Schmidt just alluded to, it's not just about saving dollars and cents. If we're catching this early, that's saving lives. So that is, we're, we're here for our teachers, we're here for our students, so we wanna do what's in the best interest of our employees. So that is, that is the recommendation of the Health Insurance Committee, and I would be happy to stand for any questions.
Are there other questions from the board? Ms. Bulley.
And this one may be more for you or Dr. Bonebrake, but I hear often that they have trouble finding providers
That's true.
to take them in. So do we have? If that's true, how do we provide for that?
I would say from my standpoint, if we are sending this out in July and they have the whole year to have that exam, even though it's hard to find a primary care provider, I think generally, at least in my health system, it can be. But they're there, I mean, you can find them, you just have to look. And this might, and from my perspective, I would hope that this would incentivize people to look. If it's hard and you look and I can't find anybody and there's no incentive, then maybe I just give up. But hopefully, this would incentivize them a little bit more. Dr. Bonebrake.
Ms. Bulley, one of the things we could do, and Ms. Schmidt and, and board, you know, on the PD days and on the wellness days, we can say in advance or encouraging people to ensure that they see their provider. So you already know, like today, that it's four months from now is the PD day in October. And you know, the one in April, and you know when those days are. So perhaps we can do some packaging and language should you choose to proceed with this recommendation. And so we're giving people time because sometimes seeing a provider means you gotta take off work or find a day. But planting that seed early on and encouraging that as a part of professional development.
Would there also be an opportunity to engage our healthcare provider at Topeka High?
We absolutely can. In fact, we have a meeting on the schedule. I think it's either tomorrow or Monday. So we'll share this packet with them. They don't know about this yet. They are excited about having more people come through that. So thank you for that. I wouldn't have thought of that. So thank you for that. We could even partner even beyond that, using Bishop and some of our clinics as options. So this will cause us all to think creatively about how to partner with people on certain days. Thank you for mentioning that. We'll bring it up to them.
Dr. Bonebrake.
And the Topeka, that was what I was gonna mention, the Topeka High Clinic is very underutilized. They may only have one or two visits a day, and they can see many more individuals.
Absolutely. And they see a lot of our staff, so, and our staff's children. So we certainly will share this with them and give you their feedback.
Ms. Bulley.
I was wondering if, because a primary care is somebody that follows you along the way and keeps up with your history. So I get concerned about like the Topeka High one where they see you once and then, you know, say, you need to find somebody, and I still can't find somebody.
Oh, no, they actually follow, you might remember Ms. Beasley, now Sinclair, the media person. She came and said her primary doctor is the Topeka High Clinic, as is her children, and that's who follows her. And so we are fortunate, and we've had the same practitioner there over the years, the same nurse practitioner, at least. And so, but I hear what you're saying is people pick their person. If they have nobody, it's a starting point. And then they have a referral service to link you with a physician. So the practitioner is there, and then their physician is on the other end of that. So as this rolls out, then we will come back and give some maybe quarterly updates or semestrally updates. So we can say, here, here are some communication things we're doing to promote health and wellness.
Would there be an opportunity to engage that clinic and have them onsite at the PD days and have appointments where people could step in? And so then it kind of wraps around everything we're trying to do. We have it there. They can step out from PD, go if they have an appointment, visit.
I love how you think, because we do use schools, even Topeka High has been used as a PD site. So if that were one of our sites, then certainly we could do that, or they could be elsewhere. But them having their own location, of course, they have far more tools to truly do a nice health exam right in that space. So we'll plan on that as well. So keep the ideas coming, and we're excited to roll this out and see what the outcomes end up being in terms of improved health outcomes.
Other questions or discussion? Dr. Bonebrake, do you have a question? Are you just yelling things? Okay, thank you. I don't, I don't believe this is an action item for us.
We, I asked for it to be a discussion item, just so that when you're talking about something on the committee, finance, health and wellness, that you're bringing it to your full board partners. And through this, we're getting direction from you, like Ms. Wallace now knows, PD Day, Topeka High probably will be one of those sites. So we thank you for that. And as long as there's consensus, we will proceed forward. Ms. Sharp, any final comments that you'd like to make?
No, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Minkie has none. Do you have any, Mr. Bucy?
He, he continues to whisper into Mr.
That's absolutely not true. We, we do need to get this information out to our staff as soon as possible. We really, I think it's important.
Yes, agreed.
And Mr. Minkie, before he broke the microphone, did want me to mention that there should not be a cost barrier to this because with the Affordable Care Act, the preventive care should be fully covered.
Yes, yep, a hundred percent cover. Yep. Okay, thank you.
Gentlemen, we appreciate you. All right. The next item is really the cellphone policy. This is really your work session. So we do have Mr. Dick here representing the secondary schools in particular. And yeah, just Mr. Dick. So with that, we're gonna turn this over to the board as you have your discussion. And Mr. Dick, I will share that Mr. Reiner does have a document. I believe it's either at your desk or online. That administration, I believe, responded to DCAC's report. So for those that aren't aware that are listening, as DCAC did their report, is that already passed out? And so at your place, the DCAC report had several recommendations on the screen. For those that are watching online, in red, we have our response that we would recommend as an administrative team to each of those. Also, there are some items listed in red that are challenges to some of those recommendations. And so in that area, without going through all of these in detail, but for those that are watching, in terms of personal devices in schools, we, as an administrative team, agree with many of the items that they've shared with. But the bell-to-bell schedule, Mr. Dick will speak a little bit in terms of the secondary input regarding the bell-to-bell schedule. The other areas under the personal devices in school, there certainly is continued support from administration to not have cell phones in classrooms. Mr. Dick, you wanna speak to the bell-to-bell schedule in that regard?
Sure, Dr. Anderson, I can speak to that briefly. This came up, I think, in the Technology Committee meeting the last time we had one, a couple of weeks ago. And at the time, I think Ms. Bulley asked the question, and I wasn't necessarily totally prepared to answer that. Given it a little bit of thought and some experience in using yonder pouches in the classroom for all students and doing that once previously, just some of the challenges that we faced, and then trying to think of applying that if we were to do it school-wide and try to do it as they enter the building or leave the building. I can foresee some just significant logistical challenges to trying to pull that off day in and day out. One would be just the amount of staff that we have to do it. We know, and we noticed and saw when we did it at Topeka West, that over time, and it didn't take long, students would just tell you they didn't have a cellphone. They'd put it in their bag or somewhere else. And so it got to be the thing with the teachers about, are we going to search them for it? Are we gonna challenge them on that? The kids would tell you, if you don't see it and you don't hear it, that's what you want. So if it's in my bag versus the pouch, why do you care? And most teachers were fine with that. If they wait outside cuz they wanna use their phone and don't enter the building, and they all choose to come in at seven fifty instead of seven fifteen, that is a huge volume of students to try and do that with. We have some students who, well, several really, that we struggled to get to come to school. We don't need to give them another reason to not come or have an idea and not wanting to go to class. The open lunch and students leaving at lunch and coming back to the building, are we gonna do it when they leave and then have to put it back in when they come back in? And the amount of staff that we have to do that for two lunch periods each day, the amount of vents and everything else that students leave for, I just see, we will spend an enormous amount of time and resources to try and just make sure that if we're talking about entering the building and leaving the building, and that I'd see significant challenges to us to be able to do that. You know, if it's something we wanna do on a classroom basis or something like that, I could see that being more feasible and more easily workable. When I think about just Topeka High, for instance, we've got six administrators who are likely the people that are trying to deal with this for sixteen hundred students. And all of this stuff on and on throughout the day, that will take a considerable amount of time and effort in order to be able to do that. So that's kind of just brief thoughts about that idea.
From the secondary conversation, which really focuses on the yonder pack piece. So in that, and thank you, Mr. Dick. So in that space of the DCAC report, you'll see under A1, and then you'll see those other numbers following that. The recommendation of using yonder packs, Mrs. Wallace shared, what we purchased was about three per classroom when you think of all the yonder packs. Ms. Wallace, am I saying that correctly? Three to five per classroom. So we don't have a one-to-one yonder pack to tell every student to put it in there in regard, in regards to their suggestions about taking phones or having them secure them. Not every school has lockers or locker space. So those were some logistical issues with that particular item. But the rest of the items from the task force in terms of a safety plan, professional development, and making sure that we also inform parents and empower parents, we wholeheartedly agree with and have referenced that in our comments. For you to know, this will also be posted on our website. So if you're watching, we wanna post the DCAC report, some of the areas of comment that we might have in that regard. The last item that I'll mention in terms of the report overall, in terms of parental oversight, the technology team shared that they already have purchased a technology software that allows for parents to have greater oversight. So we are thrilled with the report. Lots of great recommendations, things that we'll do next year to get us started. And we will make the yonder packs an area in which we are encouraging people to distribute those in ways that make the most sense for their building. With that, I'll turn it over. That's our response to that report, and we'll turn it over for the board work session.
Yeah, their thoughts from the board. Yeah, Dr. Bonebrake.
You've heard me talk about this before. In France, cell phones are not allowed at schools. In Germany, each school can decide, but at most, they'll have one hour where a cellphone can be out and exposed. Same hour for everybody, same place. They can all congregate there. But the mental health issues, the person-to-person interactions have been shown to be radically damaged by the use of cell phones. I would propose that cell phones are not allowed at school. If they are found, they are confiscated and taken to the principal's office, then may be picked up after school. If it happens a second time, the parents can pick it up the next day. But we have to do something about this weapon of mass distraction. Just keep it short and simple, the kiss syndrome.
Thank you. Dr. Beeson.
Okay, what I think should happen is we do have a bell-to-bell policy that students have cell phones powered down during the school day. I don't think we can probably regulate whether they have them in their possession. I don't think we can probably regulate whether they have them in their possession during the school day, but they should not be out. We should not be able to hear them. Um, things with cell phones have changed a lot since I was in the classroom and social media was not as big of a deal when I was teaching. But those were the policies that we had, like kids just did not have cell phones out. And they knew that. I think being in high schools, we have, we have improved the policy, but being in the buildings, I think because they aren't supposed to have them out during instructional time, there's more hallway roaming, more bathroom time. They're finding ways to get to it. Where if that was not allowed, that the phones could be confiscated and maybe that's, every teacher has a couple of of the yonder packs for safekeeping if that happens. Um, and they are turned into the office or a more secure location to be retrieved. Um, I'm not so worried about open lunches. If kids have their phones powered down during the day and they leave during lunch and turn their phones on, as long as the rule is that they're powered down when they come back on campus, that makes sense to me. Um, I think that this is something kids can do and uh, will benefit from, but will also probably enjoy. I wish someone would take mine from me sometimes. Like, I think we all need to be helped in some of those behaviors that we are addicted to. So that would be my proposal is that it is bell to bell. That we don't hear and we don't see them and that there is no point, you know, during the school day that they should be out inside the building. Um, but I think that does solve the issue of parents want their kids to have a communication device on them in case of emergency or various other things. So that would be my recommendation. Beginning of the school day to the end of the school day, not in there's no way to, I mean, unless we're getting rid of open lunch, which I don't think our schools can accommodate, there's no way to regulate whether kids have their phones on during open lunch, so.
Ms. Schmidt.
So I too agree. Um, at my house, we were very strict parents. We made our kids sign a technology contract. Uh, their screen time was uh, based on what kind of grades they were getting in school, better grades, more screen time, and that was screens across the board. Um, not so good grades, lot less screen time. And they had to plug their devices in the kitchen. As part of the contract, we required our children to give us the log on and password of every device and every app they had. And we routinely checked those things. And oftentimes uh, found some nefarious things going on. Um, you know, that we open our kids to when we give them the whole wide world web on a device they can carry in their hands. Um, you know, we talk about wanting to create digital citizens. This is part of that. These kids have to understand that they're gonna go to work for an employer and their rules and their employers don't want to see them on their phones. And some of their employers will not allow those phones to be out. And so this, we can kind of look at if we want to create digital citizenship, is the first step in that. Understanding, you know, even with devices, there are rules or frameworks that live around those things. Um, I believe that we should have a bell to bell policy. I think there, um, if, if anybody has tried to talk to a teenager with a cell phone in their hand, you know, you might as well talk to a wall because, because y- you do not have their intention. And I cannot imagine the battle that teachers are going through, trying to fight with those devices in the hands of those kids, which have software written to hit every endorphin button they have, to keep them coming back, to keep them checking their likes, to keep posting TikToks, to keep doing, um, Snapchat. Um, a- and I, I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair to our teachers. I don't think that we're engaging students in the highest quality learning when we're allowing that. And it's, it's, I'm not saying it's gonna be easy because I respect all the things Mr. Dick brought up. But I also don't think we want to teach our kids that we're not gonna do something just because it's not easy, if it's the right thing to do. And I think it is the right thing to do. From bell to bell, they should not be out. Now, what that looks like specifically, I don't know. But I know that it distracts in the classroom. And furthermore, I think whatever we decide to do, we have to be consistent across schools. We have to make sure that administration go, teachers don't get to make this decision in their classrooms. This is the policy and everybody will be held accountable to that policy. Because I'm the rule follower. And so I'm gonna be the one that's telling them no. And then they're gonna go to the, their favorite teacher who lets them do all the things they're not supposed to. And that's not fair to put our teachers in that position either. So those are my thoughts.
Ms. Bowley.
I see some difficulties, probably some huge difficulties going bell to bell. But I also think without it going like bell to bell, of being able to have policy that supports our teachers in the classroom more and our principals, because at this time, I don't think they have any policy where they can reprimand teachers that are allowing cell phones in their classroom. So in other words, being able to build that expectation in every classroom, rather than teachers still choosing if they want to let the kids get away with this or not because it's too, too hard to fight. But it gives the principal more uh, authority as well over this situation. Um, I don't think, I, I don't think if we allow them to have it over lunch period, that's considered bell to bell. So, you know, there's a, you know, a door opening there. So pretty soon it'll be lunchtime. And then, you know, uh, some other time where they fit it in. So I, I just think we need to have an expectation for our district. If you are going to work for us, you will follow the cell phone policy. This is what's expected. How are you going to set this up in your classroom? I know I've seen s- some schools outside our district have some success with the bags hanging on the door where the kids check them in and then they're not taking them to the bathroom. Because they're, they're there and they can't remove those until the class is over. I mean, that's a lot less expensive than yonder packs. But the yonder packs, to be able to say, you have broken this rule, now this goes into the yonder pack and it's going to the principal's office and you'll have to deal with it there. I, I just feel like we also need to add ear, earbuds. Teachers are not, every, every student has a one to one device. They don't need to be using their cell phones to do any education. They can figure out a way to find an app to be able to create, oh, their surveys or whatever they think that, you know, I've heard them say, oh, well, we do it for this. I think their one to one, that's why they have the one to one. I feel like our smaller high schools could possibly go bell to bell easier. Uh, Mr. Fulbright, is that maybe something that would be easier, Hope Street? Then say a sixteen hundred population?
I know that uh, old principal Noel said he did not want us to be the only school, did it?
That's, that's a good fact as well. Yeah. Um, cause I would still like to have your thoughts on classroom situation. And also feedback from Mr. Dick, and he's probably spoken with some of his other high school uh, principals as well, of what a belt that, that. I know that as the adults in the room, we should just say, you cannot bring your cell phone to school. But we also have open borders and not all schools are doing that. Um, we have students that don't want to come to school in the first place. This is a great reason not to come to school. We have to be able to teach that citizenship where it's not used during academic time. Just like when you're working, you don't have a break right now to be on your cell phone. This is academic time. If you're passing in the hallway, that's your break time. But I really feel like the pouches on the doors are the most effective for teachers to be able to keep those phones out of the students' hands. And I could be wrong there. And I would love feedback from principal or classroom teacher on that, rather than just saying, it's in your backpack, don't touch it. I know you hear buzzing. I know you're gonna get it out, put it under your desk. I just like some feedback on that.
Mr. Dick, didn't you do something similar at T-Calc?
And I'll just invite Mr. Dick to this conversation, so he's part of the circle.
I feel like when we did a tour there, there were some of your classrooms that utilized kind of that methodology.
We at T-Calc, uh, three years ago now, I think it was, we purchased, we call them, I guess, cellphone jails. It's a ten slot. They're clear plastic cases. Uh, they have a key and a lock. The kid can put their phone in there, lock the door, they keep the key. Then they go back and get it later. Uh, some teachers use that a lot there. Others used it. Uh, basically, if you had your phone out, whatever was a problem for you, then you're gonna go put it in the, in the jail. Uh, some kids knew that I, it's gonna be a problem for me. So I'm just gonna lock it up when I come in before I even have a problem with it. Uh, and that solved a lot of the T-Calc issues. T-Calc's a little unique, as you all know, in that there's lots of hands-on things and things that are highly engaging in other ways that kind of help keep kids from being on their cell phone. Uh, but that worked well at T-Calc uh, in doing that. So we did have that kind of a process there that worked okay. And they, they still have them and they still use them day to day.
I don't know if Ms. Bowley's done.
I'm, I'm also concerned about kids locking up a burner phone. I still got the phone on me. I'm just gonna lock my burner phone in there. I mean, I just think of all the ways kids can get around this.
We had that happen at Topeka West with the yonder when they.
Yeah, we're not gonna be able to make a policy for the exceptions, I think.
We can't make a policy about the earbuds?
No, we can't make a policy to confiscate your seven burner phones so that we, we can make a policy that's general, but kids will find a way around it. But that's gonna be the exception, not the rule. I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Mr. Munoz give his comments if he.
I didn't have, I didn't have a company. I'm just listening. So it sounds like what we're trying to figure out is what does bell to bell mean? Does it mean no cell phones at all from, you know, eight to five? Or does it mean no cell phones in the classroom? Cause I, I went through and, and looked at everybody else's policy and for them, it was hit and miss, but for the most part, in the classrooms off and stored away is kind of what most individuals. So where do we fall on that? Um, I, I agree, it's a huge logistical uh, nightmare to try and figure out how to, how to pull those away from students. Maybe something along the lines of this classroom pouch system works. Individual pouchism seems to be too hard. Uh, and, and we have other things that our staff are, need to focus on. So I don't know, I guess that's, we gotta figure out, what is, what do we mean by cell, bell to bell?
Yeah, I think, I think it's easy to say bell to bell. And I think it makes sense. But I think the enforcement across the district of bell to bell is the hard part. Um, you know, whether it be pouching jails, off in a way, that kind of stuff. As a parent of a sixteen-year-old who drives to school every day, I would never want that kid to go to school without their cell phone. There is not a payphone in the city of Topeka that they could use. And if they knock on anybody's door, they're not gonna answer because they're gonna see a shaggy-haired sixteen-year-old who they don't trust. So the world has changed. So I appreciate that kids need cell phones. Because I have a kid that needs a cell phone. But I also appreciate that some of those kids also struggle with, um, you know, their brains aren't quite formed yet, so they don't know how to turn certain things off. So um, I think maybe where, where the rubber meets the road is not, yes, we don't want cell phones in the classroom, or even, yes, we don't want cell phones bell to bell or bell to lunch, bell to lunch, bell to bell. But what, what is the way that we enforce that where it's consistent across the schools and something that's feasible? Dr. Bonebrake, go ahead.
Other civilized countries have found out how it works and their students are doing very well.
I don't know if I'd call ourselves a civilized country right now.
Not anymore, not like France and Germany and Britain, Spain. Uh, we ought to grow up.
I, I will tell you, Dr. Bonebrake, the thing that's scariest for me as a pediatrician, the young people that are having kids are also the young people that grew up on cell phones. And they don't know how to turn off cell phones as young parents.
Well, we can show them how.
Right, correct. But, right, so showing the kid doesn't mean, don't ever take that cell phone to school, you know what I mean?
Leave it in the car or somewhere, but not in the school. And, you know, if there is a student is seen with a cell phone, it gets confiscated, taken to the principal's office. We spent sixty-three thousand dollars on these packs to lock them away. And, you know, that, I think that's usual, just, okay, you got a cell phone, it goes to the principal's office. You can pick it up when you leave. It happens a second time, parents have to get it the next day. Parents will get a little tired of that. Keep it simple. And going through all these schools, it's, we had a three, three-page policy for cell phones. Keep it simple. It's understandable. It's enforceable. If you see a cell phone, it goes to the principal's office.
Ms. Bowley.
One of the problems I think we have had is our, we let the tiger out of the cage where many of the European schools didn't let that tiger out first. My grandson or granddaughter now goes to a, a high school where they, they're able to take it to school, but it has to stay in their backpack except for at lunch. And they follow that rule pretty much to the T because that's what they've always done. We are in a situation where we haven't always done that and we're trying to back up. So it, it creates more problems for us and just saying bell to bell, if the, leave them in the car. That's, that's more difficult at this stage. So we really need to build a policy that helps us build to the situation where schools have figured out how to maybe possibly lock up cell phones or whatever at the beginning of day. But by next year, I don't think that's a possibility. And I don't think, and Mr. Dick, please tell me if I'm wrong, I don't think parents, just like Dr. Schumacher said, I'm not letting my kid drive to school without a cell phone. Or be there at after dark at the school without a cell phone. Or needing a ride, I need my cell phone. There aren't any payphones to call the parents. Um, well, when you got sixteen hundred students, that's a little difficult to have all those freshmen come in and call parents to come pick them up at a certain time. I, there, there's just so much, but I think we need to have something in place that gets us started with a nice, nice teeth to it. And then we can build on it as we find the possibility.
Ms. Schmidt.
I agree. I think it is a cat we've let out of the box and we're gonna have to coax it back in. Um, and I think that starts with communication. I think people know we're talking about it. I think the bell to bell idea has become so popular because this year, we said they're not supposed to have it in class. And we're hearing that that's not going so well. And so we're getting that feedback that that's still not consistent. And so I think as a board, it feels like the next step is, well, bell to bell. Um, but I think you may have a point that what we need to do is create some policy and maybe that is, you know, I, I don't know what that looks like because still, when you let them have it in between classes. But if we create that policy that says, no, it's away while you're on school grounds or it's school hours from seven fifty-five to two fifty-five, cell phones away. And if we see it, we take it. And if we can get all schools, you know, that is their lifeblood just like they live and breathe, that that is what they follow. And we can get all teachers to know that their administration in that building have their back, then, you know, that's the first step. And then maybe we can cultivate that type of class where our kids just know that's the expectation. But i- it's gonna mean some enforcement. But it, it's gonna mean some enforcement if we don't have a yonder-type pack or something where we're locking them up. We're gonna have to count on people in the halls to go, whoop, it's out, it's got, you know, it's, and that's gonna be hard, just like parenting is hard. It was not easy to look at my kids and go, yo, I know you wanna use that as your alarm, but I bought you that square blacks thing over there and it wakes you up in the morning too. Go plug it in the kitchen. Every night, we had the fight. Every day, something was trying to get snuck in the bedroom and iPad. It is not for the faint of heart, but I think it is our responsibility in order to keep students engaged and prepare them for responsible productive citizenship and allow them to be inspired because right now the only thing that's inspiring them is on here.
Ms. Munoz.
You know, and I took a chance to sort of talk to everybody I could, every, every person who was in classrooms in our high schools about this sort of subject. And one of the things that they brought up was that management of classrooms, just like in teaching, that when it comes to cellphones, some teachers do really well and others sort of struggle. So I wonder, when we think about these sort of classroom, whatever you want, cabbies or packs, maybe that's something that is available to teachers who feel like that's something that they need in order to be supported. And for teachers who have good management styles, maybe they're, they're a veteran teacher who can, that's not something they need, they can do on their own. That's something that we really allow teachers to, we communicate that word there to sort of support them in a way that that's easy for them. And we don't have to go and make a huge purchase. We make a selective purchase on a classroom, based on classrooms and teachers who tell us that would be useful for me, so.
Other comments?
I do think we need to be able to give the principals the power to reprimand teachers who are not following that policy because now it's kind of a relationship piece, right?
Well, and as.
Expect that not to happen, but.
Mr. Munoz pointed out, maybe not just negative, but also how can we support you in the classroom to follow that policy and whether you're, I, this is a secret, but I've known Mr. Fulbright for a long time and he's one of my very good friends. And I know that Mr. Fulbright is a veteran teacher. He's an outstanding teacher, but he still struggles with classroom management. So it's not, it's not just necessarily always the comfort level of the teacher, but it's also maybe the kids. And you know, different kids come from different backgrounds, right? So not every house is gonna be as strict with electronic use. And some houses, it's from the time they can hold an iPad. And so it's gonna be a lot harder for some kids than others. So it might be in those places we give the teachers the resources to be successful. But maybe that's not a expect, like, it seems like the pouches would be very difficult for all of our high schools. But to have some resources that we can individualize a little bit would be nice. Ms. Schmidt, did you wanna?
Whoa.
Oh, nope, I am ignoring Dr. No, just kidding, sorry, Dr. Beeson, go ahead.
I was just thinking, talking about classroom management. For some teachers, taking away the option of cellphones will maybe cause classroom management issues also. And I wanna acknowledge that, not just the, they are taking away the cellphones, but just like as a parent of small children, they are so much easier to manage when they have a screen in front of them. And so in our high school settings, if kids are done with their work early or whatever and they have a screen, that means they're not engaging in maybe some other behaviors. So I, I just want to note that whatever policy we come up with and is enforced because this cat is out of the box and has been, it's going to take time. We have to like all be invested in these incremental changes probably. And teachers will have to know that that's gonna be a transition too. So agreed that it should be about supporting them in the classroom. And to me, I know we, we talked briefly about like, what is the definition of bell to bell? I think in our particular district, at least what I'm thinking of is that means during the school day on school grounds. And so I just wanted to propose that as sort of the definition.
Sue, when you were on the committee with the State Board of Education, were there any representatives or was there any talk about schools that were already doing this? Cause I know we're not the first district to talk about it and I know other school districts are doing it. Did you, did you speak with anybody or did you guys have input from anybody that was already doing something similar?
So we had schools from all across Kansas. So we had very small districts to like Blue Valley, Olathe. And the smaller schools have basically never let the cat out of the bag, you know? And so it was really easy to form that bell to bell. And those small schools talked a lot about bell to bell. If they didn't have bell to bell, they wanted bell to bell. And they're also dealing with a much smaller population. The larger schools talked about the difficulties of the bell to bell, having them in place or trying to get them in place. Many, many parents did not like the bell to bell. They wanted their students to have a phone on them so they could reach them at all times. So that's another piece that we have to train parents on. While your student is in school, unless it's an emergency, you should not be contacting them. And so some type of situation where they understand it's a disruption during the day. Most of those larger schools would kind of let that, you know, cat out of the cage as well beforehand. So trying to pull it back, they talked about those difficulties. The State Board of Education just said the Blue Ribbon Report could be used as a guideline. They didn't actually take any motion on it. Because it was so diverse across the state of what people wanted. And it was reported out by only two individuals, that one of them just basically gave their, their opinion on what it should be. And so they just said, this is an outline for boards to use. And we will support board policy wherever it is across the state. So it's just really diverse, but the larger school districts are struggling with this as well.
I think, and I don't remember where it was, if it was technology, that we had a teacher on there that said, you know, she communicated, now mind, mind you, I think she is elementary, right? She said, but I communicate with my parents that this is the expectation. And every parent that comes in and every time I see him, this is the expectation. If, because there was some discussion about, oh, well, what happens if we have the device in the principal's office and something happens to it? She's like, not my problem. It wasn't supposed to be there. They weren't supposed to have it out. So if anything happens to it, it is not our responsibility. And so that, after she said that, you know, and she said she's never had any issues. And so I think part of it is just gonna be communication, communication, communication. Setting whatever we decide, this is our expectation from bell to bell, from eight, seven fifty-five to two fifty-five or whatever the hours are on school grounds, it is not to be out. If it is seen, this is what's gonna happen. We're enforcing it at every school. We have, just like you have steps, you know? If first time, this is what's gonna happen. Second time, this is what's gonna happen. Third time. And we've got to be consistent on that. And in order to assure parents, you know, I think we have to make sure, okay, this is what we're doing. We need to make them understand why we're doing it. It's not a thing to be punitive. You know, we're not, we're not trying to be big, bad school board, let's throw our weight around. We're, we've took an oath that we're gonna engage students to prepare them for responsible productive citizenship and inspire an excellence for a lifetime. And we think that this works against that. And so that's why we're doing it. And then we really need to lay out how parents can get ahold of their kids and what that expectation is. Nope, they're not gonna be able to walk through in between classes and, and give you a call anymore. But we, we will have somebody answering the phone in the office. You know, maybe that's something we don't have right now. Maybe sometimes it goes to voicemail. So maybe we have to look at making sure that somebody's there to take that call, just like, you know, my mom did before cellphones existed. And I think it's just gonna be incrementally, we have to do these things, we have to be persistent as to why we're doing it and we have to be consistent. Because if we change it and, and we go, you know, if half everybody's not doing it, then we just might as well forget it. And then if we change it again next year, you know, that makes it hard. You know, we just need, if we can consistently do it, then I think we can get the cat back in the box or the cage or wherever the cat came from. And as the kids come up and as those parents are staying with the district, that'll be the expectation. They just know. You just know. No, I can't have my phone out. You know, those families, no, no, I can't, I've gotta call you at the school office if something happens and I need to come pick you up. It'll take time, but I think we can do it.
That was Ms. Hoffman at Technology Committee. So I do think the middle schools, I think not all the middle schools maybe, but for the most part have been successful with their expectations, which is essentially a bell to bell this year, but the high school's a different bag or a different. It's the cat out of the bag. I don't know why we're saying box and cage and all these things. It's, we let the cat out of the bag. That's been bugging me all night. Thank you. Anything else?
I do.
Mr. Munoz.
I do like the fact that you, you brought up the fact that we, most of our conversation has been at the high school level. And we should also have some, a plan that looks at middle and, and elementary, which I think is easier, right? We can be a total, total ban at elementary and, and middle school. I don't know what that would look like, but it seems like our hardest challenge is at high school. And, yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Bulley.
So it says that our action for next time is to possibly approve our cellphone policy.
Yeah, we don't.
Do we need, still need some work on the cellphone?
Yeah, I think that's just there as a.
Approving this policy.
That's just there as a possible action item. We don't have a policy to really approve right now, I don't think.
So really our next step is to agree on what we would like in the policy.
And then bring it back.
Yes. But we need to do that.
Quickly.
A very quick turnaround.
Quickly.
And it seems like our options are no phones from bell to bell, absolutely none, which some schools have done. Or no, no cellphones in the classroom off and away or silenced away, which most of the larger, you know, Wichita and in the case areas have adopted, unless you are.
Yeah, I do believe that's, that's pretty much what our current policy is. So I guess, do we have consensus tonight on what type of policy to move forward with, to work on, to be able to bring back?
I think bell to bell. I mean, I think, you know, while on school grounds, during school hours, obviously not basketball, football, you know, but during those times that it's, it's away. Because if it gets out, then you're taking the cat out of the cage box or bag in the middle of the day and it's hard to put back in. You know, the kids don't wanna go to the classroom. Oh, I'll go use the restroom and wait until somebody finds me so I can, you know? And so I think it, it's easier to do it at the beginning of the day, put it away, keep it away, you can get it out at the end of the day. But if we, if we're, I think that's part of the struggle with the enforcement right now is that we're telling them, put it away during class, but we're getting it out in the hall and then it's hard to put back away. That takes a lot of discipline, I mean, to do that. And these are kids whose frontal lobes aren't developed. They don't think and do those things well. And so we're here to help them.
Do you, can I follow, like, so, so for your bell to bell, is that locking up the phone from bell to bell?
I, I don't think it necessarily has to be locked up.
Okay.
I mean, it's like Mr. Dick said, that's gonna be really hard to do with yonder packs or classroom boxes. Maybe we make those options available for teachers. Maybe we have a sign up that says, hey, this is gonna be what it's gonna be next year. How many people? Do a survey, be data-driven, right? Who would have interest in having something? Or, you know, we can start first year with, it's just a way. Here are the consequences if it's out. Any teacher says it, you give it to them. If you fight them, then this is what happens, you know, and, and we lay out that expectation.
So would it be appropriate tonight to decide, take a vote on bell to bell or academic time? Or, you know, I'm not sure what this looks like for the policy committee to move forward on anything.
I think we can come to a consensus. I don't think it has to necessarily be formalized as a vote because then we can put it, we can make it more formal when we have the policy as directed by our consensus. Mr. Munoz, were you gonna say something? No. I keep on thinking he's gonna say something. I, I would agree with Ms. Schmidt that I think in all, in all the things, I think my only heartache is lunchtime, truthfully. I, I hate to single out the kids that don't have a ride to go off campus. And I hate to move all the kids out of the lunchroom into the community, into Holiday Park, so they can use their cellphones. And so I, I think I, I, that would be my only worry and, and I do feel like if we're not locking it up or if they're just in jail for the day or, or for the class, or if they're in a pouch for the class, then for me, the lunchtime, it almost feels like it may be a little bit easier to manage if they're allowed to use the cellphones during lunch. But, but others, otherwise I would agree with Ms. Schmidt completely. Are there other thoughts?
So we would be looking at no cellphone between beginning of school day and up to lunch period?
I think you could say bell to bell with the exception of lunch.
Okay.
That's the easier way to do it.
And would that include the bus on the way to T-Calc?
I think they're allowed to use their phones and earbuds on the bus right now. Which again, as Dr. Beeson knows, it's a pacifier. It may help with disruptions. And I kind of feel the same way at lunchtime. Lunch might be a little bit calmer. And there, I don't know how much active learning is going on at lunch. And so I, I think we could, in, in our policy, I believe in our policy now does talk about on the bus. And so we would treat the bus the same, no matter when they're taking the bus.
This would be a good way to kind of stair-step. So we could do something like this, which isn't completely restrictive. Do that next year, get feedback from the teachers like Mr. Fulbright and others on Mr. Dick on how, how easy it's been to enforce. What kind of issues have we had? Is after lunch now, have we just created a new nightmare? And then stop and look at the data for the year and reevaluate whether we need to go the next step. You know, and, and this is, this is an opportunity in our communication with students, staff and parents too, to say, okay, we're gonna stair-step this. We're gonna try the next thing because we believe it's important to providing quality education, which is what is our responsibility. If this doesn't work, then we're gonna become stricter. And, and, and that puts it a little bit in their hands, you know? So if they wanna follow it, they can follow it. If people don't follow it, then, you know, then they, then they lose that, that freedom or the, the the choice, you know, to be able to get it out because you won't be able to.
Other thoughts?
I'd be curious what Mr. Dick and Mr. Fulbright think about something like that. Do you feel like it, you feel like we're there now and it's still not working? So this really isn't a change or thoughts?
I would say when you're talking about bell to bell, so my nervousness in the beginning would be about if we have to take them and put them in a pouch or something to start the day. If you're talking about, you just can't use them during that time and we figure out what that looks like, but not necessarily as you walk in the building, you're putting it into something. I think that's manageable. I think that's something we can try to do. Passing periods, I think, will be difficult. You know, we're gonna flood the hallways with a whole bunch of kids all of a sudden and how many can we get to? And how many can we get to if they are walking down the hall with their phone out? But we can certainly work on that. You catch a few of them and over time it slows it down and we'll, we'll get there. Uh, I can envision even at least at Topeka High, uh, given the way that we have a restroom set up right now that maybe, yeah, you, you put your phone in a pouch or something if you're going to take the restroom pass and go to the bathroom and it doesn't go with you, or you don't go to the restroom. Uh, I can see things like that working. Lunch, I think is a, is a challenge. And so I think it's reasonable to say that you could use them during lunch. I don't foresee there being significant issues after lunch and saying you're going back to the regular bell to bell policy through the end of the day. I think this is workable. Uh, again, enforcement consistency across classrooms and everybody that's with any of this is the challenge that we have to work through with people.
Mr. Fulbright, can you come up? Can you come up? Don't, don't talk till you get up to the microphone.
I'll, I'll say that I've seen admin do some things that were logistical nightmares because we knew it was in the kids' best interest. You guys remember the sneeze guards? And the pandemic, like we figured out a way to do that when we thought it was really in the kids' best interest. I would, I would take, uh, the door pouches, some policy like that if we're not going to spend the money. But I think it should be every classroom. It should be the routine. The teachers that I've talked to in other places, like the ones who are happiest, it's a yonder pouch at the start of the day. The, the student owns it. It's theirs. It's checked out to them. It's their responsibility. They lose it, they don't bring it, their phone goes to the office. They put a burner in it. The teacher's like, gosh, oh, no surprise, they did this, but they actually keep their phones, their actual phones put away because they know the consequence of that. Yeah. I mean, teenagers are going to be teenagers, right? So we force them, those schools, they force their students to be maybe a little more dishonest, but their phones were kept away and student engagement increased. Um, I get that the, the money issue with yonder pouches is, is a thing. Um, I don't think it worked for us classroom teachers to be the ones policing it. It's led to the inconsistent enforcement and it also wasn't as visible. If you have the, well, one teacher in California talked about how his students have to pouch it at the start of the day in their homeroom. And then they come back and get it at the end of the day and each pouch has a number on it and the teacher sees that the pouch is on the table. That's very visual. That's required. Admin, if they walked into the building and they see that a student doesn't have their assigned pouch there, we need our admin to, give me the phone and things like that. I, I think we're asking a lot of our teachers. Maybe that's me just biased as a teacher, but honestly, I could, I could now speak as a parent. Um, because I've got three of those in 501 and I am worried about what their school experience will be like. I came up here to address a question. I don't remember what it was.
No, you did good. Thank you, Mr. Fulbright. Other thoughts? Does the board feel comfortable with working the policy as we discussed this evening? Dr. Beeson.
So when we say working the policy, we're saying bell to bell excluding lunch?
Yeah, and, um, I don't know if we're being, I don't think we're being specific as far as pouching or how that's achieved, but maybe giving some options for tools.
I'm in favor.
Sue, are you in favor?
Yes.
Mr. Munoz.
Yeah, uh, bell to bell, except for lunch, I think, uh, to compromise and, um, we should move forward and try to develop something that, to mirror that.
Yeah. I know, Ms. Schmidt, I know you are. I'm going to acknowledge Dr. Fulbright. I know, I know he wants to keep it simple.
Yeah, keep it simple, bell to bell, including lunch. And if it's found on a student, goes to the principal's office, first time they can pick it up after school. Second time, parent has to come get it the next day. Keep it simple.
So the consensus is bell to bell excluding lunch. Thank you, Dr. Fulbright.
You're welcome.
But we do have consensus. Uh, and so the hope would be that we could put something together to bring back very quickly. I could, I had talked with Dr. Anderson about bringing it back for that first meeting in June so that we can continue to keep this momentum and move on it so that we can be better prepared for, uh, the new year. Ms. Schmidt, did you have something?
I would challenge, um, all of us who sit on the policy committee, uh, to begin kind of looking, seeing what we might be able to scrounge around and find out there. Ms. Whitman, if you might be able to help us with that, um, give us maybe if we have some other things to look at, so we're not trying to reinvent a wheel.
When is our next policy committee meeting?
On Monday.
Okay.
That's perfect timing.
We have Sunday off.
And a slow weekend, yeah. Okay, I think we have, uh, Mrs. Whitman, yes.
Just as a point, you have ten sample policies, uh, from ten districts of similar size across the state. Uh, so that will give everyone a starting point, uh, on, uh, what they're doing and possibly some language.
Yeah.
As we, uh, uh, go about developing a first draft.
I think the difficult, at least with Glancing, a lot of their policies are pretty similar, it feels like to what we had this year. So, um, we might have to adjust it a little bit. But I'm glad I'm not on the policy committee. Uh, so I don't know, just kidding. Uh, Dr. Fulbright.
Dr. Anderson, did you find the details of the New York State Legislature recommendation? Cause they banned cell phones, I thought completely.
We'll add that to your Friday update. Um, so I'm not sure that we have exactly what you're looking for, but how about I send some things your way in the morning just to make sure that all of your colleagues? I did share that we would place something at the table and we did talk about that. Um, but, uh, I don't know that we have exactly what you're looking for.
I, there's a press release from the New York governor that they delivered on promise to restrict smartphone use in K-12 schools throughout the entire school day. And they are budgeting thirteen point five million dollars to achieve that. We could just have thirteen point five million dollars. Yeah. I think that's a, a difficult part is we're gonna work on this with less money probably than we've had, so.
Unless, unless we do like jeans day, right? Where you make everybody pay five bucks for jeans. Tell kids if they want to get it out over lunch, you know, they've got to pay a fee. And then we can take that money over time and then use it to restrict it all day long.
Okay, I think we have, uh, our work to do. And I think that's it for, um, discussion items and we'll have an action item hopefully next meeting. Uh, so we'll go to board member comments and start with Dr. Fulbright.
I told everybody they couldn't have board member comments tonight, so.
Dr. Fulbright, please.
We had the health insurance update, although we still have two thousand t-shirts. We didn't manage to give those away. And the wellness committee, that was part of the fifty dollar surcharge. If you do not see a primary care position, the finance committee, uh, we're not getting any federal dollars for Sheldon Head Start. That's three plus million for our district. I guess it's a cost.
And Sharp, can you speak to that?
Yes, we did have a meeting with the regional office this week and it has been put back in the federal budget.
All right, we did get a two hundred and fifty dollar increase in the per student allocation for our budget next year. So that'll cover a portion of spit. That's all I have. I'm sorry.
That's okay, Dr. Fulbright. Dr. Beeson.
Um, my update was mostly going to be about Health Insurance Committee, which we have covered. Um, I went to my first adaptive PE field day last week, which was magical. So I loved seeing that, um, really impressive. What? Um, all the kids in adaptive PE had a, from around the district were brought to Hummer for a field day specifically for them. There was face painting and games and competition and community members helping and lots of district volunteers too. So that was wonderful. Um, really enjoyed our two graduations yesterday. Looking forward to Saturday. I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Great. Ms. Polly.
We are, a couple of us had personnel committee meeting today. And it, just for the board's information, it is resignation time of year where our teachers actually have time to look at other districts. And so we do have some resignations. Um, but we are in such better position than we have been in the past. And we also had less retirements this year, which is very helpful. We are building on our teacher apprentice program and making it stronger and more defined. I was going to talk about Head Start, but it's a little celebration. I should have brought a little horn. We got our, our funding back for Head Start. So it's very exciting that we have that for our young people. I'm just so excited about that. Um, I wanted to thank teachers for, all the teachers that are taking their letters training. It is just, I like seeing them put this pop up where, uh, more and more names are showing up on our agenda. And the robing ceremony at Highland Park High School today was fantastic. Where each student gets to pick their very, uh, personal staff member to robe them before graduation. And then they also announce the top ten and then the valedictorian. And it's just a very wonderful tradition. I just really enjoy seeing our staff being, um, built up like that, being chosen as that favorite person. And I, adaptive field day, it was the happiest place on earth that morning.
Thank you, Ms. Polly. Mr. Munoz.
You know, I'll just echo what everybody has said before. There's a lot of events going on, end of the year, uh, band concerts and, and music performances, um, as well as recognitions for staff who have, uh, been recognized in lots of ways, whether they're retiring or whether they've been, uh, awarded, uh, you know, some, um, recognition. Uh, and obviously, uh, the sort of, the elephant room is, is graduations. We're excited to, I looked at the, the total is, there's hundreds of, of our graduates here. What, what is it? Four fifty at, at Topeka High, two oh seven at Highland Park and two sixty-nine Speaker West, as well as Hope Academy forty-six. So a lot of celebration, a lot of happiness, uh, celebrating this milestone for our students. We can be proud of them. Uh, and as well as our staff who helped them, uh, get to this point. So look forward to an active Saturday.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Ms. Schmidt.
I think everybody else has said it all.
That's great. Uh, I had personnel, the, um, we've talked about exit interviews. And so we're hoping to bring some more stuff back on that, maybe in July. Uh, we talked about that and then finance, Dr. Fulbright touched on. Um, oh, we talked a little bit about our, uh, in finance, the insurance, like, um, insurance like against natural disasters and that kind of stuff and how it's harder, as, as evidenced by California and my new insurance policy for my house, it's harder and harder to insure things. So some of the creative ways that, uh, the co-op that helps ensure, uh, provide insurance for our buildings and, and other things, um, are addressing that. Uh, and then the only other thing is for next meeting, hopefully readdressing cell phones. And then we had also tou- touched base previously about readdressing the FUSIS Center, um, from the police department and the sheriff's office. So hopefully we'll be able to talk a little bit more about that, uh, next month. And I think that's all I have.
And Dr. Schumacher, while we have, uh, celebrated our police officers many weeks and months, uh, because they have many different days. I can't remember the, uh, all the other ones, but, uh, this is a time in which the, our, uh, social media, we highlighted our officers for National Police Week. Is that correct, Dr. Grace? Or National School Police Week? It may be just all police. Uh, and even Dr. Grace said, well, this might be the second or third time. We certainly know that safety is a, a priority and want to acknowledge that with Chief here, uh, that we thank our officers who will be at the graduations all day, helping parents navigate, uh, as they have been already the first few. So thank you, sir, chief, and to your team.
Yep, thank you. Um, so with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
No, I have a comment.
Nope.
I make a motion to adjourn. That's my comment.
Okay. And the second, Dr. Beeson. And then we raise our hands to acknowledge that motion with our right hand. Mrs. Schmidt, thank you. It's unanimous.